So moved.
Moved by DeLuca, second by Birak. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Ayes have it, four to zero. First item of business is visitors to be heard. We do not have any visitors to be heard this evening, so we will move on with our consent agenda. Our consent agenda includes items, city council workshop meeting minutes from April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five, city council business meeting minutes from April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five, and city council workshop meeting minutes from May twelfth, two thousand and twenty five. Were there any questions or corrections, Administrator Colander?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, with that, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Birak.
Second.
Second by Francis. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. The ayes have it, four to zero. Next item of business this evening is accounts payable, and I will turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Our city bills for the last month total one hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and two cents. Our ACH payments that were made were ten thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and fourteen cents. And bills that were taken from the funds for the two thousand and twenty-four street improvement were ten thousand, four hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. I will just note that I was asked a question as to why there wasn't a payment advice with those. This was a Bolton and Mink bill, did not come from the contractor. So that's why there wasn't a payment advice with that.
Thank you, Administrator Colander. Any other questions regarding city bills, ACH bills, or the two thousand and twenty-four street improvement payment? Hearing none, then I am looking for a motion to approve accounts payable, which includes city bills, ACH bills, and the two thousand and twenty-four street improvement payment.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Francis.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The ayes have it, four to zero. Next item of business to come before us this evening is our staff reports. In our packet, you will find written reports from our fire department, West Tonopah Public Safety, our city engineer, public works, our planner, and our administration and finance. Anything from Administrator Colander?
No, Madam Mayor.
With that, I am looking for a motion to accept all staff reports as submitted in writing.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Francis.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Birak. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Ayes have it, four to zero. All right, next we'll move on to new business. Before us this evening, we will begin with our two thousand and twenty-four audit presentation. Turn that over.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and council, for allowing me some time on the agenda tonight to present the audit results for the December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four audit. And Kevin, I think you're controlling, so you can keep going. So what we'll do is we'll have this broken into essentially four different areas. We'll have some required communications that we have based on auditing standards. We'll go through the actual audit results. What we call emerging issues are really those are the upcoming governmental accounting standards that are going to be impacting the city. And then lastly, there's several slides that are going to be going through some of the financial results for the city as well. So if we continue on. When we start to look at the required communications, what this is, these are the communications that us as the city's external auditor are required to communicate to those charged with governance, which is the city council. And what we break this down to is looking at it and goes, it's that reminder that an audit provides reasonable, not absolute assurance as to the results within your financial statements. The reason we say reasonable and not absolute is because in order for it to get to absolute, that means we are auditing one hundred percent of your transactions, and that's just not feasible. So by providing reasonable assurance, that allows us to use a risk-based audit approach, which means we get to adjust how we test based on a risk assessment of the city. That risk assessment's really based on our understanding of the city, discussions with staff, discussions with a member of the council, and then just our knowledge of Minnesota municipalities. So that allows us to develop that risk-based approach. Now, looking at that as well, if you want to go back one slide actually. There we go. We'd let you know if we have any significant accounting estimates that have any high degree of uncertainty, which the city doesn't have any. So our responsibility for estimates that are within your financial statements is really to make sure they're reasonable and they're supported, and there's no management bias in those. We also want to let you know that we did adopt two new governmental accounting standards, or we use that Ackerman-Gasby governmental accounting standard, board statements. This year, we adopted number one hundred, which is a statement that the biggest impact to the city is when you have some of your funds that might go from major to non-major or vice versa. There's now going to be a column that reconciles out your beginning fund balance. So not going to be a huge impact for you, and it's not something you're going to see have impact on the city any give, you know, any or most years, I should say, because usually your funds are pretty standard as far as what's major and non-major. So the second one, statement number one hundred, related to compensated absences, that that impacts how we record that accrued vacation and sick leave for the city. Since the last standard that impacted compensated absences, that was thirty-plus years ago. So there's a lot of things now that governmental accounting standards didn't contemplate thirty years ago. Paid safe and sick time, PTO instead of having separate sick and vacation banks. So that just impacted how those, that liability is calculated. So it didn't have, it did have a slight impact to the city's liabilities, but it wasn't a huge impact. We were able to just with the calculations from the city, just take and get that adjusted through current year. So if it was material to the city, you would have saw a restatement in your financial statements, which you didn't. And then finally, we'd let you know if we didn't have full cooperation, or we had difficulties or disagreements in performing the audit, we didn't have any. So working with Jesse at ABDO and Jacob and the rest of the city staff, everybody was very helpful in getting the audit completed this year. So if we go to the next one. So as far as your actual audit results, the city received an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that any entity can receive, regardless of whether you're a government, nonprofit, for-profit, unmodified is that opinion you want to see in your financial statements. We also look at internal controls as part of our audit process. We do not provide an opinion on controls. That's not the role of an auditor. So what our responsibility is, is to let you know if there's any deficiencies in our testing that we identify, which we did not identify any deficiencies. So everything that's all of the controls in place are operating effectively based on what we look at. And then we also look at Minnesota legal compliance as part of our audit as well. Yeah, that's broken into seven different sections, covering everything from cash and investments to tax increment financing districts and kind of everything in between. And we didn't identify any exceptions in our testing related to that either. So very positive results when looking at the results of operations for two thousand and twenty-four. Looking at the next two years, basically, of upcoming governmental accounting standards that are coming out. The first one, statement number one oh two, is going to be a risk or a, going to be a note disclosure statement only. So this one, the ultimate goal of this standard by the, by the Gasby Board was to force local governments to put more information in your notes about the operating environment in which you, in which municipalities operates. Or I should say, the regulatory environment's a better way to put it. So in Minnesota, the easiest example of that is all cities are subject to a debt limit. It's a, typically, it's three percent of your estimated market value. So that's something that's going to get disclosed starting in the two thousand and twenty-five audit. Other is, other examples of disclosures that may fall into that is if the city had bargaining units that would significantly impact if one of them was either out of contract or on strike where it would impact the operations of the city. Those are the types of disclosures that they want local governments to start including on that. So the nice thing is that's all stuff that Jacob and the rest of the staff will have easily at your disposal. So it's a matter of getting it summarized and including it in your note disclosures going forward. The next two are actually going to be December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six statements. The first one, one oh, statement number one oh three, that's you know, I kind of facetiously joke, it's financial reporting model improvements, and the improvements is kind of the joke sometimes, because the Gasby Board doesn't always make things, they don't always improve things when they think they are. So the biggest impact, impacts on that statement to the city is it's going to change what's going to be included in your management discussion and analysis going forward. So it's going to have very specific things that it wants to see disclosed, more analysis of what's happening, and then also forward-looking. So what are some of those big impacts, and how are they really going to impact the city? And then the other piece is it is going to change and introduce a new kind of a new section within your enterprise fund statements called subsidies. And then it's going to be broken into basically capital and non-capital subsidies. So the easiest example for that that we see in some of our municipalities we work with is some cities are forced to levy for operations in, within water or sewer for some reason. That's the type of subsidy we're talking about. That would be broken out separately as its own category now within that financial statement. So those will be the, really, the two biggest changes for the city. And then finally, statement number one oh four, that again is another just note disclosure only statement. So over the last couple of years, local governments had to adopt several new standards related to leases, subscription-based IT, if it impacted you, things that are called public-private partnerships and those types of things. Cities and, cities and local governments adopted those, but those standards didn't really give you any information on how should these actually get disclosed within financial statements. So basically, they say you need to disclose them, but they didn't give you guidance as far as where they should be located. So statement number one oh four is just going to give clarity and say, all these new different types of assets that were created over the last couple of years, here's how they should be disclosed and where they should be disclosed in your financial statements. So bringing more uniformity to financial statements across the country. So, any questions on any of those? Otherwise, we'll get into the next section, which is related to some of the financial results. Okay, so this first graph, looking at this, this is looking at your unassigned fund balance compared to your percentage of fund balance when you look at your expenditures. So the city right now, you're about forty-three, forty-four percent of your unassigned fund balance of your budget. So what that's really looking at is, in Minnesota, municipalities are typically recommended to be somewhere between thirty-five and fifty percent as a baseline for how much reserves you should have in your fund balance. The city is kind of right smack dab in the middle of that. So the idea behind that is, worst-case scenario, if the city didn't collect a single dollar within your general fund, you could get to that first tax levy settlement during the year, which is typically late June, and then the second piece comes in in July. So that's, that's usually the basis behind that recommendation. The city right now, as I mentioned, you're right around forty-three, forty-four percent, right in there. So you're kind of right in the middle of that and in a very stable spot within your general fund. Looking at this next slide, this is looking at your general fund only and looking at your revenues. So this is a scale based on one hundred percent, so it's not taking into account if your total revenues are increasing or decreasing. This is looking at just the proportion of your revenues and where they're coming from. The, the big pieces that you see in here, the two biggest pieces, that dark blue line, blue section, that's your property taxes. That's going to be your biggest piece as we see with most municipalities, the size of Maple Plain. Property taxes is where you're going to be the most dependent. The next biggest piece is going to be that lime green, which is your intergovernmental revenues. That's where your state aids are going. In addition, in two thousand and twenty-four, the city also recognized an additional about two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of ARPA money that was sitting in reserves. So you're now seeing that money come through as well. And then the other piece, just to, to call out in there, that dark orange piece, that's really your interest revenue. So it's it's a bigger piece of the general fund, but not all of your interest revenue ends up in the general fund. In total, the city over the last couple of years, you've seen last year, total interest revenue was about sixty-three thousand dollars. This year, it's up to three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So there's been a very nice increase in that interest revenue. Combination of just better returns. In the market, we're seeing that in a lot of spots, but then also just being wise with that and actually investing it, because we do have some cities where they don't invest, and it just sits in a bank account. And it's getting, you know, fractions of a percent in there. So the city is trying to make more with that money that's sitting in reserves, which is great.
Kudos to our staff for that.
Yes, they're doing a great job with that. If we go to the next slide, this is also now looking at the same type of information, looking at your general fund expenditures, just looking at proportionally, where are the dollars coming from? Or where are the dollars going to, I should say. Biggest pieces that we see, and this is very common that we see in most cities the size of Maple Plain. Your public safety is typically your, your biggest, if not your second biggest area. In Maple Plain's case, it's your biggest piece. That's where your dollars are, are going. It's police and fire services for, for city residents. General government, that's going to be all of that administrative side of the city. It's administration, finance, voting, elections, all of that stuff gets caught into that general, general government piece. So what we're really looking for here, again, this isn't taking into account whether your expenditure budget's growing or shrinking, just where are the dollars going to? Are we keeping them proportional year over year? And really, the biggest piece is you are. The, the biggest piece in there that really does impact this is you'll see more debt service in the general fund now, but that's really a, a factor of Gasby eighty-seven, when that was adopted two years ago. That lease liability that's out there, that, when you make those payments that used to just be part of your operational cost, that's now alive, now considered debt service for the city. So nothing changed in how you're doing your work, it's just a classification issue within, within financial statements now. But very, very consistent year over year. This slide is looking at just your special revenue funds. So your special revenue funds, they're listed out on the bottom. It's really the biggest piece is the fire partnership fund. And then outside of that, you have four other non-major ones. The economic development, you have a gambling proceeds fund, and then you have your American Rescue Fund, which is now at zero, but we still wanted to include it out there. And then your equipment repair fund. So the, the bulk of this is, for the most part, sitting in committed, which means the, the council has formally committed how you're using those dollars. That's, that's what we'd see. The biggest piece is that fire partnership, and I know there's been some discussions around, you know, how is that handled as far as if there's excess or anything like that, and portions have to get refunded back to the, the two members, the two-member cities and things like that as well. So, but that is the biggest piece in there. We go to the next slide. This one is your capital projects fund, and this is one I do want to apologize, the slide did not, I was given, having some issues with PowerPoint, and apparently it still didn't correct itself on this one. But on the bottom there, you'll see basically there, it's restricted unassigned and assigned on the, on the right, but it's kind of in the middle. Just slide those, those labels all the way to the far right, and that would line up on this. So this is looking at all of those capital project funds, and what are we doing with these dollars? Typically, what we see in here is your dollars are either going to be assigned, which means the city has designated uses for them. Sometimes you will be sitting on some restricted dollars in there, if you have some unspent bond proceeds and things like that. But otherwise, you will have some unassigned dollars as well, if you're starting to spend money on a project, but you haven't actually issued debt for or come up with that final financing plan yet for that. So that's why you do see some of those unassigned numbers being negative in here occasionally. So nothing concerning in there, nothing out of the ordinary, but just wanted to kind of point out where that should be going. If we go to the next slide, this is really just looking at those debt service payments over the next couple of years. This one unfortunately is another one where the graph kind of messed up on the bottom left-hand side, and I can email Jacob a new copy of this for the council if you'd like to see that graph fixed on this. But the debt numbers on the top right, this is your, kind of your your debt that's going to be financed through just typically levy and assessments within your governmental funds. It's just over seven point four million dollars. And really, when I look at this slide, if you, when I send out that updated slide to Jacob here after the meeting, there is, you're pretty consistent. You're plus or minus that six hundred thousand dollars of principal and interest payments for about the next ten years. And then as debt rolls off, that'll start to decrease. Just word of caution, that is only debt that was issued and outstanding as of December thirty-first of twenty-four. So if there's plans for new debt, those types of things, that's obviously not going to be impacted in there. Go to the next slide. These next several slides are actually going to be looking at the enterprise funds. So this first one is looking at our operating income or loss for water, sewer, and storm sewer. And the biggest piece is in here, so this is true operating income. So this factors in all aspects of these three enterprise funds. That's factoring in depreciation, everything. So the, the storm sewer and the, or storm water and sewer are both positive operating income, which is, which is great, especially when you're factoring in depreciation. Water is, still has a deficit in the operating income, but you're making gains on this. Really, you start to see that sharp increase from twenty-three into twenty-four, as the city did have to make those decisions to increase rates in there, and that's where you're going to start to see that turn around pretty dramatically in twenty-four. And you'll see, we have a separate slide on each of these a little bit later as well, but that's really that big piece in there. Those rate increases are taking effect and providing some additional resources in there to help make sure that you're having a, a stable fund. This next slide is looking at, what's our operating income look like if we back out depreciation? And the reason we looked, like to look at this, it both kind of with and without depreciation is without depreciation gets us back to, are we just really paying the bills? Are we actually generating income or not, just from day-to-day operations? Billing the customers for their usage, operations, whether it's salaries, repairs, maintenance, contracted services? Are we just funding operations? The nice part with this is all three funds are they do have a prop, a positive operating income when you back out depreciation. So you're covering day-to-day operations, which is great. Then it starts to get into, to philosophical discussions, is should current users pay for a hundred percent of the current system, or should they pay for a portion of it, knowing that it's going to last? You know, typically longer than most residents are going to last. So it just becomes a philosophical discussion after that. But the big piece on this is you're, you have positive operating income when you back out that depreciation, which is great to see. This next slide is the unrestricted, or what we call the spendable portion of your net position. So within your enterprise funds, your two biggest pieces of, of your net position are kind of like retained earnings is either going to be the, the net investment in your capital assets or your spendable piece. So this is looking at just the spendable piece. So this is, how much do we actually have available to spend in here? And here's where you're seeing that as well, that very sharp increase, which is mirroring where you have the rate increases as well in these funds. So you're, you're adding to those spendable resources within within your enterprise funds, which is, which is a good thing. These are very capital-intensive and areas when a repair goes, when a repair needs to happen, it becomes a lot of dollars very quickly. And without having some reserves there, you don't have the ability to make those repairs without having to figure out how to finance, take a loan out from another fund or something like that. So having these reserves in place is a good thing. The next slide is looking specifically at the water fund, and this is where you can see that the, where we're going, total operating revenues, operating expenses or expenditures, and then those two different lines. Income before depreciation, income including depreciation. And a couple of different things, your total expenses did decrease slightly this, this year, which is good. You're controlling those expenses. The other big pieces, even with operating rate increases within water, two thousand and twenty-four was a wetter year than two thousand and twenty-three. So that's why you're seeing revenue staying pretty consistent, even though you had a increase in rates, there's just less usage because it was a wetter summer. You know, a big driver of this is going to typically be irrigation. That's usually a big driver for, for most communities on how we're going to, if we're going to have a good year or a bad year in our water fund, that's a big part of it now. So the fact that you are still generating, you know, positive income before depreciation, and you've kind of shrunk that gap on that overall operating income with those rate increases, it's, it's really working towards achieving what the city council is trying to with the rate increases. Looking basically the exact same thing on the sewer side on this one. The, the, if you want to say, the water usage because of irrigation doesn't necessarily come into play on this one. So a rate increase within your sewer fund, that's going to be, have a more direct impact on your actual revenues coming into the fund. Typically, the way cities, the cities bill out sewer, it's usually either you're trying to prorate what that is, so you try to back out, and you don't penalize residents for sewer, because that doesn't go into your sewer system typically. It, you know, it gets absorbed back into the ground. So here, when you have a rate increase, it actually has a direct increase to your revenues typically. And you can see that your revenues in two thousand and twenty-four from twenty-three took a pretty significant increase, which is good. That's adding to that positive operating income for the sewer fund. Looking at the storm sewer fund, this is also one now, over the last couple of years, where the city has been able to start to turn that around. It's really, it comes down to controlling the expenses in that. Sometimes you just can't control it if there's any kind of maintenance or contracted services, but your revenues, again, here stayed pretty consistent over years, and really, it comes down to you controlled your expenses on this one. So that's adding to your operating income, and you're back above the positive now, where in two thousand and twenty-two, you had a, you had a operating loss in the storm water fund. This next one is really just taking a look at your total cash and investments for the city, and where is that cash and investment sitting? So in two thousand and twenty-four, the city had about seven point six million dollars in total cash, and you can see the breakout of where all of that cash was sitting. The biggest piece is it's a, a big chunk is sitting in your enterprise funds, that's two point seven million almost. And then from there, it's another big piece, capital projects. You're, you have the resources set aside for various projects that you're, that the city is using. And then it's going to be in your debt service funds and your, in your general fund is your other big piece in there. But that gives you that breakdown in there. And like I said, seven point six million in twenty-four, you had about six million dollars in twenty-three, and about six point four million in, in two thousand and twenty-two. And then on this one, what we're looking at is really just budget to actual for the general fund, but then also the three enterprise funds. So this one on the, the very top of the graph, that's your general fund. Really, the biggest difference in here, as I mentioned earlier, the city did recognize the, I think it was the last, about two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in ARPA dollars that were sitting there. So that's now brought in here. So you're over budget on your revenues, over budget on your expenditures because of that. If you back that out of there, you'd be just under budget on your expenditures, and your revenues would be pretty close to right on budget. So that's why the general fund shows that you're over budget on both pieces, but it's because of those, those ARPA dollars that got recognized during the year and used. From there, looking at, kind of working our way down that graph, the water fund, city doesn't budget for depreciation, so that just, it shows it has no budget against that, but it was about two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars was your depreciation for the water fund for two thousand and twenty-four. Next, we look at your expenses, which is down there. You are over budget by about ninety-six thousand dollars, and really, the biggest pieces with this is contracted services and then equipment repairs and maintenance, were the two pieces that put you over budget in the, in the water fund for your expenses. Likewise, your revenues in the, in the water fund were over budget as well. The biggest driver of this actually is the city had some new special assessments during the year. So in a enterprise fund, they're full accrual, so when the city certifies assessments, it's revenue right to the bottom line again. Even though you may not have the cash, it's still revenue for the city. So that's the biggest piece of why you show over budget in the, in the water fund. Looking at the sewer fund next, this one also very similar. There's no budget for depreciation in the, in the sewer fund, so that was about ninety-one thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-four. This one, the city was actually under budget on the expenditures, on the expense side of the sewer fund by about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, and that was primarily all within contracted services. The sewer fund on the revenue side, over budget by about a hundred and seventy thousand. Similar to the water fund as well, special assessments was a large driver on this one. New assessments equals revenue for the city. And then also just the, the actual usage part of the revenues were also over budget in this one as well. So that did come into play there. And then the storm water is the last piece on this one. This one, the city actually does have a very small budget for depreciation in there. It's the only fund that had a small budget for depreciation in there, but it's, it's a lot smaller than anything else. As far as actual expenses, you're over budget by about eighty-seven, or about eighty-three hundred dollars. So not a huge piece in there, but you were just slightly over budget on there. And then the revenues within storm water, there actually wasn't a budget for the storm water side either. And then the revenues within storm water, there actually wasn't a budget for the storm water side either. But outside of that, I'm open to any questions that any member of the council may have.
Any questions for Christopher? Thank you for being here tonight and for watching this. Hearing no questions, I'm looking for a motion to receive.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Birak, second by DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Next item of business this evening is the vacation of easement, resolution twenty-two-five oh five two seven oh one. And I will turn that over to our planner, Mr. Colthus.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. We held a public hearing earlier this evening relating to the vacation of the easement for the Gateway Boulevard property, Outlet A. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or go over any other detail relating to that. The resolution before you would just confirm that the city is in compliance with the statute as it relates to holding a public hearing and then vacating the public drainage and utility easements associated with the Gateway of Maple Plain, Outlet A plat.
Any questions? Or further discussion? All right, then I am looking for a motion for the vacation of easement, resolution twenty-two-five oh five two seven dash oh one.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Francis?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Birak. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries four to zero. Next item of business before us this evening is the QuickTrip developers agreement, and I will turn that over to staff as well.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Along with the approval for the QuickTrip development, it was recommended by the city attorney that we consider and then hopefully adopt a developers agreement, which would just stipulate certain terms of the approvals. So it would incorporate the approved plans. It would look at several provisions relating to the construction and maintenance and the permits required. It would talk about the completion of the improvements, indemnification, and then payment of any city fees or costs that are required as a part of the approvals. And then just some general construction-related items like street cleaning, erosion control, erosion and sediment control, weed control, things like that. It's a little bit of an, this area is a little bit unique, because we don't really often have commercial developments that are kind of new ground-up builds like this, that don't really have any public improvements, but there are some impacts to adjacent public improvements. There are also some fees associated with this development, like park dedication. And so putting it into a developers agreement just kind of solidifies some of those deal points. And so with that, the city attorney did draft the development agreement before you QuickTrip did review. I would ask the council if they were ready to move forward on adoption of the development agreement or approval of the development agreement to motion approval, allowing for the city attorney to make any minor non-material changes that would occur between the two attorneys. There was some back and forth even this afternoon. It's very, it's very non-material language. I will just point out that QuickTrip did ask in paragraph four A that the park dedication fee be tied to the building permit, not the plat. And that's just a timing issue. And the city does have the ability to grant that in our ordinance, that we would tie it to the plat and not, I mean, tied to the building permit issuance. And so the language that the city attorney recommended would just note that we wouldn't issue any building permits until all fees are paid by the developer. I think that one's, I think that has minimal risk. In this particular case, they're ready to pay it, they just need to get the check, and they want to file this plat as soon as possible. And then they had a couple of comments that were going back and forth on paragraph eleven J, which just is the termination of the agreement. Non-material language, it was just really attorneys kind of trying to just tie the knot on this deal. So if the council would approve it with non-material minor modifications as recommended by the city attorney, we could approve it, and then if anything does change in the next day or two before this gets signed, that would give the attorney the ability to make those minor changes. But happy to answer any questions, pretty straightforward document drafted by city attorney Landsman and reviewed by QuickTrip. I will note that this is kind of our last step with the vacation that was just approved. QuickTrip is planning to file those plats fairly quickly and ground break in the beginning of July, which is part of this timing thing. So we're trying, they're trying to get it, keep it on their schedule of a July ground break. And I think there'd be more to come with that as relates to doing a little groundbreaking thing. So happy to answer any questions on the development agreement.
Any questions regarding the developers agreement? If not, then I am looking for a motion to approve the QuickTrip developers agreement, the adoption of that, allowing the city attorney Landsman to make minor modifications as needed.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Francis?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Birak. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries four to zero. Thank you very much for your work on that, very exciting. Look forward to July. All right, with that, we will move on to council reports and other business. Would anyone like to kick us off tonight? I will, Councilmember Francis.
So my May started off with me being in Greece. And when I came home, I was then busy attending the Maple Plain Fire Awards Night, which was a lot of fun. Attended a couple workshops, tonight's public hearing and business meeting. And I've also attended the Memorial Day Program out at Lewis Cemetery as a member of the auxiliary of the Legion. It was a very nice program, a lot of people were there, the weather was excellent. The sun was a little too bright, so I fried my forehead. But it was nice to have the sun shining compared to last year, it rained. And then I also attended a couple rotary meetings. So it's been a relatively quiet month, which has been kind of nice.
Thank you, Councilmember Francis. Councilmember Birak?
I just wanted to say, I attended the Fire of Fire Awards Ceremony, and that was great to see the accomplishments that our Public Safety and Fire Department does and achieves over this last year. City Cleanup Days was great to see everybody coming out there. It was nice to have the community, the camaraderie that the community upholds with it. It's great to have the people come out and clean up everything. And then final thing I want to say is, next month is Cookies with Council, and I'm the one that's up. I just wanted to invite everybody out as many as we can get. The information will be posted on the website, and information will be forthcoming. That's that.
Thank you, Councilmember Birak. Councilmember DeLuca?
May has been a month of workshops and opportunities to celebrate. And I too was able to go to the awards dinner for the Fire Department. I think it should be noted that we have one of the finest fire departments in the Twin Cities. Chief Dennison and all of his officers ought to be complimented. And it was just fun to see a group of dedicated, committed, and really, really good firefighters there. And to honor them and to say thank you for their work was very touching to me. Kevin and I have also finished up work with the Citizens Advisory Group that will be presenting to us at a workshop, some thoughts about the various public spaces. And we'll get a chance in June to take a look at that. So we're excited to have the community engaged in the work of their parks and their open spaces. And I think you're going to see some pretty good activities and things come from there.
Awesome, thank you for that work.
Yeah, as we've heard, it has been a busy month, lots of things going on that we've all been able to attend together, and it's been fun to do some of the celebrations. Administrator Cole Andrea and I were able to attend a meeting, kind of an impromptu emergency call meeting by Commissioner Anderson with all our District Seven elected officials and city staff, talking about budget discussion and legislative updates, and how that could potentially affect our county. When the county gets cut, that means the cities get increased. So just to be prepared and to keep our eyes on that, and we'll have legislative updates and information. I had the privilege of participating in the National Day of Prayer hosted at Maple Plain Community Church. So that was a nice service and brought together a lot of different people. We've had various rotary meetings and service projects. Last week, we actually heard from Ryan here in North Shore, right in the city of Maple Plain. So it was fun to hear about their plan and their development and their capital campaign that they are kicking off. We also helped with the City of Independence Cleanup Day and the Wellness Export. Orno, you're always the favorite table when you're giving out Johnny Pops, so heck, who doesn't want to volunteer and do that? But that was fun, just to see all the kids and be there. And then, just a reminder, I know we talked about this last month, but May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and that at any time, people can dial or text nine eight 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 and get a live person, and that is for any age. So just that no one is ever alone, and there's always resources out there. LMC, we had our board meeting, working on the annual meeting coming up, which I know many of us will be attending in June, Maple Plain City Events, the cleanup. I think this year, the highlight for me was one resident came back and picked up all of the bikes in the middle of the grassy knoll, and they are donating those to be refurbished. So just the fact that someone came to get rid of stuff, saw those there, knew about an organization, and took it upon themselves to go get their trailer and come back and get those. And that's, that's just one of the things we love about our small town and why those things are cool. The awards night was great, Chief Dennison, everyone already alluded to, did a great job. And whether they got an award or not, they're all our hometown heroes, and we just appreciate their commitment. Party in the Park, we've been working hard, plans are underway with that, with the rotary and the city and the partnership there. Sponsorships have been great, so we're hoping for beautiful weather and hope to see everyone there. Chamber this month brought in an outside speaker, Eric Thierwanger, Think Great. He's a marine veteran, spoke about leadership at every level, so it was very empowering, a great session. Nice to offer something here in partnership with the City of Independence. They hosted at their place, and then the Chamber hosted the event. Northwest Hennepin League municipalities, elders came out, and we talked about TIF. We all love to talk about TIF, Tac, Increment Financing. So yes, that was an informative meeting as well. Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee, that was an interesting meeting. Would be happy to talk about that offline if anyone wants to. Director of Public Safety, Chief DeRose, and I toured the Orno Schools campus and went and met all the principals and social workers, just getting him engaged in the community and the school district. You know, it's unique with so many cities making up the Orno School District, so it was fun for him to do that. He's already spoken at the Forensics Day, and has just been engaged, and has been a great asset already to the community and available. As Councilmember Francis alluded to, Monday, he showed up at the Memorial Day Service in uniform and was shaking hands and meeting people, so it's just been a great asset, and we're glad he's here. Today, for the Chamber of Commerce, we had our board meeting, planning and looking ahead. We also did a ribbon cutting at Refresh Nutrition, as they have new owners, and kicked that off, so welcome to them. And I know some of these things have already been mentioned, but June seventh, Party in the Park, five to eleven. August eighteenth, Battle of the Badges, and I know Cookies with Councilmember Birak, but I know I saw the date, but I don't remember the exact date. Is anyone?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, okay, so come to that. And then just on a more somber note, you know, one of the perks of being an elected official is we get to meet with lots of other elected officials and city staff, and you do build relationships and camaraderie. And yesterday, we lost a very dear, sorry, member. Mary McComer from Oak Park Heights passed away. Mary has served since two thousand. She was one of the first women that I ever met and was instrumental in small cities, Minnesota Women in Government. She's won the C.C. Ludwig Award, she's won, I don't know, lots of big awards, and was instrumental in the bridge in Stillwater in Oak Park Heights. And she fought a very long and hard battle with breast cancer. And she is still, was the current acting serving mayor there. So since two thousand has served her community. So we just want to think of them as they're transitioning and honoring her, and we're grateful for her example. So I'm just thankful for her and sorry I was not prepared for that. But that's, that's my update. Any other updates? And I'm super excited about QuickTrip and can't get, wait for the date in July to hold the shovel and throw some dirt. So thank you to staff for all your work on that. Jacob, thank you for your work with the budget and the investments. It's fun to see those interest numbers, you know, come up now that we've had a whole year and can't wait to see what they're going to look like in twenty-twenty-five. Hopefully, the market continues to be good to us. All right, with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Birak?
Second.
Second by Francis, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it four to zero, the meeting's adjourned at seven fifty-one.